All right, we are going to call this meeting to order, Vice Mayor.
Please stand for the invocation, remain standing for the invocation. Thank you.
We'll call please.
Councilmember Rita?
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Here.
Councilmember Call?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Here.
Mayor Hernandez?
Here.
Thank you.
There are no current agenda changes and any council authority members staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time.
Mayor, I have a conflict of interest in item 10.1.
All right. So we're going to move forward to presentations. So we do not have code enforcement here tonight, but we want to make sure to recognize them. They are, whether anyone agrees or not, an essential part of our city staff. Just to dispel a couple minutes, they're usually complaint driven, so we do not as a city go around, you know, looking for code enforcement violations and we really want to thank our team for what they do. And so I will read it. Whereas the state of California has proclaimed the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week and whereas code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health and welfare of Riverbank citizens through the enforcement of local, state and federal laws and ordinances dealing with various issues of building zoning, housing, animal control, environmental health and life safety. Whereas code enforcement officers have challenging and demanding roles and often do not receive recognition for the job they do in improving the quality of life for residents and businesses of local communities. Whereas the role of many code enforcement officers has expanded in recent years with jurisdictions increasingly relying on the expertise and training of code enforcement officers in their communities. Whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified and highly trained professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing communities, ensuring safety and preserving property values through the knowledge, training and application of housing zoning and nuisance laws. Whereas code enforcement officers often have a highly visible role in Riverbank and regularly interact with the public and the variety of federal, state and county and local officials in their capacity. Whereas the city of Riverbank wants to recognize the code and honor the code enforcement officers that serve our community and acknowledge their role in leading the way to improve quality of life in our community. Now therefore let it be resolved that the city council of the city of Riverbank hereby proclaims the second week of October in 2025 and annually thereafter be known as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in the city of Riverbank. We'll send along the congratulations to them. And if I could have our Sister Cities Committee join me at the front. All right. Do you want to come over to this side over here? We switched up the podium, so we'll have you come over here. So we want to thank you for all the work you've done with Sister Cities and today's actually Sister Cities International Day. So we want to recognize you today and I'm going to read the proclamation to you. Whereas Sister Cities International was established on September 11th, 1956 as a presidential initiative by President Eisenhower at the White House Conference on citizen diplomacy aimed at fostering community-led global relationships to enhance cultural understanding and reduce the risk of international conflicts. Whereas Sister Cities International offers an opportunity to recognize the profound impact this organization has had to build bridges between nations, cities and communities worldwide, promoting mutual respect and world peace. Whereas October 14th, the birthday of President Eisenhower is a fitting occasion to celebrate the birth of the modern Sister Cities movement. Whereas Sister Cities International now boasts 400 member cities, counties, states forming relationships with 1,800 communities across 138 countries on six continents. Whereas in recent years, Sister Cities International has convened bilateral and regional summits to enhance and expand sister city relationships in diverse regions including Ireland, Mexico, Russia, China and across Africa and the Americas. Whereas the city of Riverbank proudly participates in this global network, maintaining sister city partnerships with Tamazula, Jalisco, Mexico and Fuyang, China. Whereas these sister city relationships support educational, economic, cultural, municipal and humanitarian exchanges that are mutually beneficial for all communities. Whereas Sister Cities serves as a call to action for residents of Riverbank and people around the world to continue their commitment to fostering a more peaceful and prosperous future. This day also highlights the power of united communities in promoting peace, progress and prosperity globally. Whereas the Riverbank Sister Cities Committee has held events and fundraisers in an effort to promote understanding and build relationships amongst individuals, communities and cities of the world through cultural, economic, educational and humanitarian activities. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council declares October 14th, 2025 as Sister Cities International Day in the city of Riverbank. Thank you so much.
Of course, yes, please.
My name is Cal Campbell. I used to be on the city council. Currently, I'm the president of the Sister City Committee. This committee has been just fantastic. A year ago, we got started and I'm going to read you some things that we've done. In 2002, Fucheng, China, Riverbank's first sister city had visitors go to Riverbank and Riverbank had visitors go to their city. In 2007, Riverbank's second sister city, Tamazula, sent visitors to Riverbank and Riverbank sent visitors to Tamazula. They are still Riverbank Sister Cities, but contact with them over the years was not done because of economic conditions at the time. In the spring of 2024, council members Luis Ribe and John Pimentel started organizing a group of citizens to become the Riverbank Sister Cities Committee. And they had offices and bylaws and were recognized as an official Riverbank Committee in the fall of 2024. The committee made enough money to have a Riverbank High School student apply for Sister Cities Youth Legislative Conference in Washington DC. Several high schools in the state of California applied for this. Unfortunately, our high school student was not the winner. We hope to do this again in the future. During the past year, this committee has helped students and citizens to lead better lives. The committee members have worked with the Riverbank Sheriff's Department to help build bedroom furniture for a family that did not have the funds to get the furniture. The committee has also worked with the Riverbank Chamber of Commerce for projects on citizens in our community. Community. The committee will communicate more with our sister cities so we get to know them better. I would like to thank the city of Riverbank staff for all their assistance and I want to thank the committee members and council members who have supported the committee and helped us to be successful this year. We are a small committee and need more members, so we can do more for the community. There are no membership fees to join the committee. If you're interested in joining the committee, contact me at 209-380-0523. Thank you for being here tonight.
Eight. And now, 7.3, a presentation from Beam Circular.
Yeah, we click this one to let go. Okay.
Good evening. My name's Crystal Asher. I'm the VP of Public Policy and Development with Beam Circular. Thank you so much for having us today to give a presentation about what Beam Circular is and sort of what we're doing in the community.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. My name is Brianna Gonzalez. I'm the Community Partnerships Manager with Beam Circular.
Great. So I'm really excited to be here in Riverbank in particular today. I grew up down the road in Oakdale. Spent a lot of time in Riverbank because you guys have a better movie theater and also better Mexican food, so I spent a lot of time here. But like many kids, I went off to school and got a job in Sacramento and spent all of my career in state government, really. Up until, up until this point, I was Deputy Secretary for Public Policy, so I was a governor appointee and served as Acting Director of CalRecycle for a while. But I was looking for a way to come back to the Central Valley and to the community that I sort of grew up in and and to provide a positive impact here. And so and so Beam Circular, the sort of stars aligned. And I found out about Beam Circular, which is a nonprofit that's based out of Modesto and really anchored in the North San Joaquin Valley. So we cover Stanislaus County, San Joaquin County and Merced Counties is sort of our target region that we're focused on. But Beam Circular is working to, our mission is really about unlocking the power of local communities here to transform waste and particularly food and agricultural waste into economic opportunities for our local communities as well as environmental solutions. And we were actually born out of a local economic development planning process out of Stanislaus County that really it brought together sort of a public-private collaboration to sort of answer this question of how can we create economic opportunities and good jobs for our local communities in the county. And so as part of that economic development planning process, it identified the bioeconomy sector as an industry opportunity that could unlock higher paying jobs for our local communities and really build on the strengths of our region, which is really agriculture and manufacturing, while also benefiting our local environment and attracting investment into our region. So we were launched in 2023. Out of that planning effort, we were seeded by $10 million that was invested from Stanislaus County from the ARPA funds to build for Beam Circular, not just the development of Beam Circular, but we serve as a hub organization to sort of unlock the potential of the bioeconomy. So I'll talk a lot more about sort of the various things that Beam Circular does, but that all started with Stanislaus County and also recognition that our neighboring counties have a lot that can be offered. And so we needed to work as sort of a regent and that's why we're focused on the North San Joaquin Valley and the three counties that have a lot of shared strengths in food and agriculture. Since then, Beam Circular has been successful. One of our main objectives is bringing funding into the region. And so since we were established just two years ago, we've already brought in more than $45 million in public and private capital into the region. And that includes funding from the federal government, that includes private and philanthropic funding. And that also includes quite a bit of funding from the state. I won't go through all of this, but most recently, just in this last budget cycle, we were able to secure $8 billion for bioeconomy investments here in the region. And we also just a few weeks ago, found out we were successful in securing about just under 10.5 million in the jobs first grant. So a long way to go, but we've been pretty successful just in the short amount of time in bringing in funding into their region. So our work is really grounded in some frank realities that I know you all know about. One of those realities is that the region, because of just sort of the geography, but also because of transportation that's critical frankly for agriculture and manufacturing sector. But our region has some of the poorest air quality in the nation and we have some of the highest rates of childhood asthma in the country due to the poor air quality in the region. In addition, we produce a ton of biomass waste annually. Again, this is sort of necessary and we want to be producing this in a lot of ways because this is largely coming from our agricultural sector. So California is on track to produce 56 million tons of biomass waste. And just the biomass waste from our three county region is enough to fill a line of shipping containers from LA to Portland, Oregon every single year. So we have a ton of that biomass, that organic waste coming out of our region. And so this is obviously a challenge for our agricultural sector. But it's also an opportunity area and that's where the circular bioeconomy comes in. And so this is all about taking organic material and making valuable new bio-based products. And so luckily, we're already really good at this in the Central Valley. It's really the foundation of food and agriculture is using biology to make new, to make value. And so this sector takes the byproducts from our existing agricultural operations. So that can include things like grape pomace for winemaking, tomato and olive pomace, nut shells and hulls, so walnut shells and almonds and woody biomass from our orchard waste and converting it into new bio-based products. So that includes a whole host of things, including fuels and chemicals. Also includes things that can be put back into the soil that farmers can use on their ground. And so there's some conversion. There's a bunch of different ways that you can kind of get from those feedstocks to the new products. And that's all I won't get into sort of the details of that, but those are all sort of biotechnologies that are used to make those conversions. So why are we leaning into the bioeconomy? I think that, as I mentioned, the North San Joaquin Valley is sort of uniquely positioned to lead in this sector for a few reasons. One, we have leading levels of agricultural production and so we have a ton of input that can be used into bio-manufacturing. The other thing which people outside of the Central Valley often forget is that we're also a high concentration of food and ag manufacturing in the region and we lead in a bunch of different verticals in terms of the largest companies that exist just in our three county region. And then you put that together with, and I'll just say, having both those things in the same region is very unique. There's only five regions in the entire country that have both leading levels of ag and manufacturing in the same region. But then add to that our close driving distance to the Bay Area and the innovation that comes out of there. And we're the only region in the entire country that has those three factors that are needed for industrial bio-manufacturing. And so, and so really we are very uniquely positioned to lead in this space and it's been recognized by certifications as well. So what is Beam doing to take advantage of this? As I mentioned, we were developed as a hub organization to sort of fuel and invest in all of the things that are needed in order to build out a new sector. So we do community collaboration. I won't go through all of this. This is usually like an hour and a half presentation. I'm really trying to keep us to about 10 or 15 minutes. But we, we invest in sort of all these different program areas. So we do workforce development. So we support our local schools and our community colleges and our universities and training providers to create career pathways into the industry. So as we're attracting these companies into the region, we want to make sure that our students and also the people who are already working in some of our existing manufacturing industries are prepared with the skills that are necessary in order to, to take those jobs as they're created. We're also investing in research and innovation, business and economic development. This is sort of bread and butter. We work with businesses to attract them to their, to their region and help them with site selection and permitting and other things to try and get these companies as they're, as they're developing to site in our region so that we are benefiting from the jobs that are created from those companies. We do really deep-seated community prosperity, which Bree will talk a little bit more about. And we also do public policy, so helping local governments to understand state laws, policies around the bioeconomy and, and also public investment. We have several anchor projects, which I won't go into at this, at this point, since we're trying to keep it short, but there are several opportunities for local government. I kind of talked about some of these. I think, you know, one of the places we find local government like to reach out to us or are benefiting the most are some of the conversations around working with businesses to navigate permitting or zoning opportunities and site selection. And also we do a ton of grants. So we have a lot of, and I think you'll talk a little bit about some of the grant opportunities that we've had as well. And then Beam is also the lead, or co-lead on development of a, what's called the CBio Collaborative. So this is essentially our network of partners. This is already out of date, but this is our network of partners that have already sort of signed on and are actively engaged in trying to build out the bioeconomy. So we've got industry folks on the ag side. We've got education partners and state and local partners who are all sort of a part of this collaborative and working with us in order to, to make this successful. I think I'll turn it over to you.
All right. So as Crystal mentioned, we have a lot of things going on at Beam. And we did have some big grants that were specifically for Stanislaus County residents with workforce development and career training and career exposure to in the bioeconomy. So I'll go over really quickly on what some of those, what, what some of the grants that we've already gave out. So we have here with Stanislaus County, we, we gave them a large grant for educator development, so making sure that we're like training the trainers, right? And then with MJC, we focused on the students and with early career exposure. And we had a group of students do this program called Design Data where they were able to go to laboratories and get hands-on, hands-on experience in labs and they also got paid summer internships. We also, we do a lot of work with our higher education partners, but we are working more with our K through 12. We're hoping to expand that in various ways. So we recently granted Enoch's High. Again, early career exposure grants and gave them funding to upgrade their, some of their laboratories and took them on a field trip to Lawrence Livermore National Labs, which was really fun and exciting. So again, it's all about really exposing our students to, to these really cool science and STEM opportunities that they wouldn't have had before. Another one is Mesa. This is, again, early career exposure, really focusing on making sure our students know what's available, what's out there, what other careers are out there. Because really, right now, when you think of like, what do you want to do for work? People think, oh, either a teacher or a lawyer or a doctor, but like, there's a lot of other things, especially in the science field. And some of those things, you don't have to have a science background too. So yeah, making sure we have our students exposed as much as possible. Here's a couple of other grants that we just gave out again. So MJC, Mesa, Stan State, and then also Volt. We want to make sure that our, our local workforce is also being invested in, right? So it's, it's not just higher education, it's also, you know, certificates and these are also a really big part of making the circular bioeconomy thrive. Okay, so let's go into our business examples. This one's one of my favorite ones because we're really just growing the businesses that are going to create larger jobs and a large amount of jobs in the future. As Crystal mentioned, we, we do investment and we attract businesses. One way we're doing this is through this program called Accelerator and we are partnered with an organization called Generator that runs these accelerator programs all across the country, kind of like incubators. I'm sure you've heard of those before. So what do the startups get out of this? So they are given a $30,000 investment. And then they are connected with like business mentors to help with their business development plans. And then we connect them to the region, whether that be through feedstock, to farmers or to industry here that need their innovation or will use their innovation in the future. And also they, with all of that, they have to scale up their, their products and their, their industry here in the region by accepting or being part of this program. So we actually got 94 applications when we first put this out. This is our pilot program, by the way. This was our first one. We're about to start our second one. We're about to start our second one, which we're really excited about. So there was 94 applications across the state, across the country even internationally. And we were only supposed to pick five businesses, but because there were so many great folks, we added one more. So six of these, so these are the six. Two of them are actually from Turlock, Dion and Edgar, Fit Candy and Terra Rosa. Those are Turlockians. The other three of them are from the Bay Area and then one is actually all the way from Tennessee. So I'm going to go through what each one of them does. So we have Verde Nana Materials, which is the first here with Danielle Pescoli. So they're using biomass or like feedstock, right, to create plastic-free packaging, so bio-based packaging. So we want to reduce our reliance on plastic and create bio-based plastics that will break down over time. And then Terra Rosa, one of our Turlockians, he's creating sustainable herbicide with almond shells. He's actually a farmer and was the one that realized like, I have all this leftover stuff. I know I can do something cool with it. And so that's how he became part of our program. And then Fit Candy, Dion, the next Turlockian, he actually created his business when he was at UC Davis and took all of their leftover watermelon rinds and turned them into nutritious candy. And now he has been, he has just signed a contract with Mango Crazy to take their watermelon rind. So building it up. And then Electroactive, which is our business from Tennessee. He has a pilot actually with Gallo already in Livingston to create hydrogen and fertilizer with Gallows Liquid Waste. And then lastly is Optimize Foods, and they're actually piloting with Quarto Olive to convert some of their feedstock into nutrient-dense ingredients. So they use olive and tomato pumice. Oh, wait, not lastly, oleo, now lastly. So they're also working with Gallo to produce sustainable oil products that can be used to create sustainable aviation fuels, which is really awesome. So they're actually using a bunch of feedstock here. So almond hulls, almond shells, walnut shells, grape pumice, all that great stuff. Cool. And so that is our first group, our accelerator program. Okay, now let's get into community, which is one of my favorite things because the whole reason why we're doing this work is for community, right? We want to make sure that we, that our community members are the ones that are gaining and getting all of the benefit from this emerging industry. So we do a ton of community engagement, a ton of community outreach, and we do this in various ways. We go to Resource Fair. So there's a picture of us at the county fair and we were doing different experiments with our students, or not students, sorry, with, with the youth. They were creating bioplastic out of kitchen ingredients and then also making seed paper out of recycled paper. And then we also go and talk to folks, like we're doing now, where we go to, we do these things called community conversations, where we talk to people about what we're doing and then get their feedback and then, then take their feedback and integrate that into the work that we do. And then, yeah, here's another picture of us out at a resource fair. We also plant vegetables with, with folks. Adults and children both get very excited about planting vegetables. Okay, and then here is another thing that we do, again, circling back to that exposure, career exposure, STEM exposure, science exposure. We take our students out to field trips. We actually have a field trip tomorrow. We're going to Stanford again and they'll be visiting several labs. One about, that's researching fungi and how that's connected to almost like every single part of nature and has a symbiotic relationship with like every part of nature. And also another, another lab that's working with fungi again, but turning that into like packaged materials and like ingredients and stuff like that. And then also, as you can see, there's someone doing an injection into the plant, another laboratory that's testing. I'm sorry, testing or doing research on, on plants, on how to genetically modify them so that way they are more sustainable and resilient to, to nature, I guess. And so making more sustainable agriculture. So, yeah, that was a really fun, it's, I love doing the field trips. They're a lot of work, but I think they're something that a lot of students don't get the chance to do. And it's not something that's open to the public. So we're really excited that we're able to give our students opportunities like that. Okay, last thing is I want to invite you all to our upcoming California Circular Bioeconomy Summit. This is happening on November 5th. It's going to be at Stanislaus State. This is going to be an annual convening of community members, you know, legislators, industry leaders, educators. We're all going to come together and kind of learn a little bit more about what the circular bioeconomy is, how it's going to impact our region and how you all can get involved. So there, we're going to have some really cool guest speakers, like Secretary of Agriculture Karen Ross. We'll have some really awesome breakout sessions on regenerative agriculture, on career pathways to the bioeconomy. So it's really just a day of learning and curiosity and networking and connecting. So yeah, would love to have you all attend. We also will be having student presentations that I talked to you about some of those grants that we've already given out. We'll have students presenting on what they've learned, their research and stuff like that. So hope to see you there. All right, I believe that's everything.
There is a registration fee, but if you reach out to us, we've got discount codes. So please don't let that be a barrier to coming.
All right, that's all our presentation. I don't know if you guys have any questions. Feel free to ask.
Thank you so much. And I remember the initial conversations with Stanislaus 2030. So it's exciting to see you here. And I'm only kicking ourselves when we weren't on the potential for your site. For the, you didn't touch on it too much today, but
Oh, there's Innovation Camp.
Yeah, Innovation Camp. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we're in, yes, I breezed over it because just for, just for time. But one of our anchor projects is called the California Bioeconomy Innovation Campus, which is an infrastructure building that we are, that we are currently in site selection for. It's a, a building that will essentially, I talked about the feedstock to bio-based product sort of transition. And there's, there's a gap in the scaling equipment that's needed to scale those technologies. And so this campus is going to be a facility for shared equipment for, for that scaling. So we are in site selection. It will be located in Stanislaus County. We have not chosen a site, a site. We have, we're narrowing it down, but have not chosen one at this point, but will be in this county.
Thank you. Are there any quick questions from council? All right, thank you so much.
Yeah.
All right. Public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council LRA board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes and time cannot be yielded to another person under state law. Matters presented during public comment cannot be acted, discussed or acted upon. So just for consistency's sake, I'm going to repeat this for every meeting moving forward. But public comments submitted via email is noted for the record, but will not be read aloud. We are going to have our city clerk summarize and to name who submitted the comments per, per each summary. So, yeah, let's move forward.
In the chamber, Ms. Beatriz Perez?
Yeah, even for the first one?
I'm not sure that this is a place to bring this up, but last year on July 5th, 2024, there was an outage where I live at 2824 Don Raphael Avenue. And they pretty much dug up half of my front yard. And PG&E, I don't know, they broke a pipe or something. It was on a weekend and they had a difficult time trying to get Riverbank Water Department out there to fix it. I noticed eventually they got a hold of them and they came out to my house and supposedly they fixed it. I noticed the day after that my water in my kitchen was barely coming out in a trickle. I called PG&E and told them there was a problem. They said, well, you need to call the city because they were the ones that fixed it. I called the city several times. They never responded. I finally went out to your yard, courtyard out there somewhere, spoke to a gentleman and he said, well, he goes, I'm very sorry, he goes, but we can't even go in your house to look at it. I said, what do you mean you can't go into my house? And I said, when you guys were fixing it, you guys came into my house. So I let it go for a while. I contacted PG&E again and they didn't respond. I went out there to your yard two more times. And I have not gotten any satisfaction. Nobody has come out to look at it to see what the problem is, is causing my water to just barely trickle out of my, my faucet in the kitchen. Today was like the final straw. Trying to wash dishes, trying to cook is very difficult to do when you have a little trickle of water coming out of my kitchen faucet. So I'm reaching out to you guys because I didn't know who else to talk to about this problem, but I really think it needs to be fixed. You know, I don't know how to do it. So, but I thought maybe this was the best place to tell you about my problem. Thank you.
Sammy? Sammy Martinez?
Hi, good evening, council, mayor, city manager and our residents. My name is Sammy Martinez. I've been a resident of Riverbank for over 15 years. I am currently the city leader of Love Riverbank. I'm also on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I'm here today first to congratulate our Parks and Rec Department for a fantastic cheese and wine festival. It was very successful and I wanted to thank the other departments that support our Parks and Rec Department so that they can bring another successful event to our community. So thank you, guys. With that being said, I just kind of wanted to touch on something that I think I've seen come up a little bit more often. There's a lot of progress being made in our community. There's a lot of growth in our community. And sometimes I think that there's the appearance that we may be losing our small town charm. And I want to put this out there because I feel like for me, this is a personal slogan. It's a personal motto and it's something that I feel that Love Riverbank needs to implement and needs to be the catalyst for our community in that maintaining the small town charm, it is not a geographical issue, okay? It is a heart issue. And small town charm comes from the heart. It's about getting to know your neighbors. It's about getting to know your churches. It's about getting to know your mail carriers, your local grocers, your, your teachers, your city leaders. It's really about investing in one another. It's about showing up and it's about caring for the people and the places that make our community home. With that being said, again, with me being the leader of Love Riverbank, I feel that it is really important for us to use our time and our energy into making that spirit come alive by creating opportunities for connection, by encouraging acts of service and by celebrating the heart of our hometown. I really believe that we as a community can come together into maintaining that small town charm. If any of you guys are fans of Andy Griffith and Mayberry like I am, you know, yeah, Mayberry might have only been like one square mile, but it's really the investment that these people had in each other that made Mayberry what it was. And I feel the same way about Riverbank. So with that being said, Love Riverbank, we have quite an agenda on our hands for the rest of the year and for the upcoming year. So we love partnering. I love to make a friend rather than an enemy. We're going to be partnering with the Riverbank Pomodoro's to bring education to the community. We've already held fentanyl training. We plan on holding suicide prevention training. We plan on holding wellness training and other, other types of training education for our community. We also will be, oh, sorry, guys. That's okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bill Berryhill?
Adam, mayor, council, staff. I actually, I'm here representing Berryhill family vineyards tonight. And I just want to give a big shout out to the job you guys did in this community, all the volunteers and the people that put the Wine and Cheese Festival together. It, I serve wines at a lot of charity events. It's kind of our marketing, how we do it. And I will tell you, no one does a better wine tasting than Riverbank. The quality of the people that came through, their knowledge of wine and everything was top-notch. The, the volunteers that were there that kept ice in our ice buckets, it was fantastic. So just wanted to come and say thank you for another great wine and cheese.
Mr. Patrick Retschleff? Hila? Oh. Sherry Finn?
I'm just here to comment on the increases that are being talked about on the social media and stuff about our water and sewer increases and how that's affecting the community and the elderly people in our town. And I think the rates are ridiculous for this town where we have higher rates than any other surrounding cities. And the offers that you give for the elderly people for discounts is a joke because I know a lot of the elderly people that are struggling on fixed incomes and you took four or five months to give them that discount of $50 and then the following month you raise your rates another 60. So you're really giving them no discount at all. And so these, these people are struggling and you guys just keep increasing the rates and I don't see any improvements coming around the older part of town. I think you're just, you know, filling your pockets or something, but the elderly people in this community are hurting from your rate increases and it's wrong.
Ms. Kimberly?
Hi, my name's Kimberly Evans. I'm doing a bourbon cutting tomorrow. Olivia's really nice to let me use her time. This, the purple castle that she always calls it. I'm going to be doing my bourbon cutting there tomorrow from 5:30 to 7:30. I will be having pizza, a raffle and whipper floats. And I just want to open it up. I do have a flyer, so I'll have them back there so you guys can take the picture here and send it out to people. And I only have two left. So I hope you guys can come to my for your bourbon cutting. It's papavati. I'm be having some Dewey there also. It'll be for $8 because it went up to $8 instead of five now. So it's papavati, $8 now. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, that is all we have for, for comment cards. I do have one on Zoom. There regarding 11.2 and 11.4, you have to wait for the agenda item to come up. You have a slash. You said public 11.2, 11.4. So I need two different comment cards. One's general public comment on items not appearing on the agenda and 11.2 through 11.4 are in the agenda. You will be called up when the items come up. So I don't know if there's anyone else with this same comment card.
I'll request a com, public comment afterwards, but, but please submit the comment cards for each individual comment.
Okay. Ms. Agers, can you please unmute?
Yes, I, I think I did. Can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Great, thank you. Jamie Agers, McHenry Avenue, Modesto. At your last meeting, I mentioned during my public comments that at this meeting, I would address the law enforcement matter that council member called had on the last agenda. Specifically, I wanted to bring up two points. One was list, something listed in the draft EIR for the proposed Riverwalk project. The second item comes from the 2016 Municipal Services Review Document that was submitted to LAFCO for the Crossroads West Expansion. So the first comment coming from the draft EIR is regarding a policy that's listed in your general plan document. The policy is called Public 8.2. And that policy has a goal for the city to have 1.25 law enforcement officers per 1,000 residents. The comment goes on to say that the city is under contract with the county sheriff's office to provide a service level of 0.85. to provide a service level of zero point eight five officers per one thousand. The comment further goes on to say that the current calculated rate of the existing officers at the time the document was prepared was zero point seven two officers per one thousand. This equates, if you do the math, to fifty seven point six percent of what's required. Or conversely, a forty two point four percent shortfall. Shortfall as compared to your own city public goal. In the municipal services document prepared at the time, that did note, noted a ratio of zero point seven seven officers per one thousand. And commented that that was due to two unfunded positions at the time. Lastly, it said that if those positions had been funded, they would reach the level of zero point eight five. So the point is, it, it appears that since at least the year twenty sixteen, the city has had a level of law enforcement officers well below the goal of one point two five officers per one thousand residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agers. And then we have Ryan? I don't.
And you have?
Josh?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Josh Flanagan. I'm a resident of fifteen years in Riverbank. I'm here to ask you to hit pause on the Riverbank Regional Recycled Water Project. Especially the next steps considered today is spending the four million dollars. I'm really concerned about how this will raise our utilities. And I've already heard whispers that this project could also inflate up to hundred thirty six million dollars. I understand the project upgrades are a water waste plant, which makes recycled water for farms, which could be good, but the cost is too much for regular folks like me. Sewer bills are already climbing. They're about eight dollars a month now, could go over to a hundred by twenty twenty seven. And could raise even more depending on the funding. A couple of years ago, they were only forty nine dollars. That's a huge jump for families, seniors and people with tight budgets in the town of twenty five thousand. People are on fixed incomes, inflation's eating them away, jobs are going away, workforce is bad. It's not a good time to raise the rates for people. The project price is massive, a hundred and thirty six million. I've seen estimates of only sixty three million in loans for the project as of today. Four million dollar steps coming straight for our sewer funds. I read last year, uh, you were still tweaking designs and waiting for grants. If the funding's not locked in, why are we pushing forward so fast? Why can't we look at cheaper options? Like fixing the current plant instead of the big expansion, or maybe parting of Modesto who's already recycling water. The city saved money before with energy upgrades without raising rates. Maybe we could do something like that again. I'm worried we're planning for the growth way out to twenty fifty when times are tough now. These rake heights hurt a lot for people like us. Please slow down and look at more affordable options. Thank you for your time.
Diego?
Hi, my name is Diego Hernandez. Hi, Council, Mayor. We have sixty three million dollars in loans that we've identified. At the last meeting, Neil Cowall said that we were going to chase fifty million in grants. He included that in his projections, which leaves a for- shortfall of forty seven point seven million. Eric Helgason suggested that we increase the rates six percent for five additional years. That's not thirty percent, that's closer to thirty five percent. If we finish our projections from a hundred and nine dollars, six percent per year compounding, that's going to take us up to a one hundred and forty seven dollars every single month. That's a three hundred dollar sewer bill every two hundred months. On top of that, it's garbage, and then it's also water. We don't even have the funding. We haven't secured the funding yet. Today, an item was tabled on our agenda, eleven point two, eleven point three, and eleven point four. At a total price tag of four million dollars. You guys are prepared today to spend four million dollars when at the last city council, Cindy Fossey brought up the turf program. Stacy called objected. She said it was too vague. You objected over a program where there's fifteen applicants per year, maybe a price tag of fifteen, twenty thousand. But you don't have any reservations about spending four million today. Luis, four million today to advance the project? Nobody, none of the citizens know that you guys are planning to fund this with six percent increases over the course of five years. The city council has to talk about this. Last time we did this in late twenty twenty two. After that happened, you guys made it one of your goals that you were gonna, gonna do outreach to the public, reach out to them, let them know what's on the agenda. Not everybody makes it to city council. Not everybody reads them. You guys are gonna surprise them again, just like you guys did in twenty twenty two. Gustavo, who's sitting right here, he's the one who actually informed me of the increases in twenty twenty two. He told me, we wrote a letter, the letter made its way to the Catholic church, they read it, shared it to the, the people in the, in the church. That's how people got to know about it. Our own mayor in twenty twenty two, Virginia Maduano, her mom didn't even know about it. She found out about it and she told Virginia. That was in December with thirteen days left to go. If you guys are planning rate increases, you guys need to be talking about it right now. And if you're concerned about fifteen to twenty thousand or fifteen applications for a turf program because the labor costs haven't been defined in Cindy's projections, how are you guys gonna spend four million dollars today when we only have sixty three million? That we can get in loans, fifteen million maybe in grants, that still leaves a shortfall. At best case, the numbers that we've seen, forty seven million dollars, that's the deficit. Worst case, seventy million. That's not all. Thirteen seconds, I guess that's it. You guys, you guys really need to do better right now. Three hundred dollars sewer bill? That's gonna put us like two hundred and fifty percent above our neighbors. Any neighboring city does not pay that much.
Ryan?
Evening, Council. Uh, my name is Ryan Nixon. I've lived here in Riverbank for over twelve years now. When I first moved here, we had, I was, I moved from Modesto and I was, I was surprised by the utility bills. They were so low compared to Modesto. But every, every year, it seems like they go up and up and up and up until now, I think we're higher than Modesto. And I'm wondering, when is that gonna stop? Because it seems like we're gonna raise the bill again for this, for this new project. And it doesn't really seem like there's funding for it. What, um, sorry, I lost my train of thought there. Um, so if there's no funding for it, why are we gonna do this? Why are we gonna raise the rates? Money is tight for everybody. It's tight for me and my family. It's tight for my neighbors. We're raised, we're gonna raise the rates to whatever they're gonna be. They're gonna be over a hundred dollars a month. And we're already spending more for everything else. Why add that on if we don't need to? Make sure that we need to, and it doesn't seem like we do. So, um, just take that into consideration, please, that we don't need, our, the citizens of Riverbank do not need added bills right now. Especially right now. With the inflation and everything, we need to, you need to think about putting a pause on this. You don't need to raise the rates right now. Okay? It, it's just not the right time. Now, we're talking, uh, I know that you're, it's for growing, or I'm sorry. It's for like protected growth, for like new, uh, housing and things like that. But, uh, what if we get into another recession or something and there is no growth? Just like it happened before, like two thousand and eight or whatever. What if? And all of a sudden, you've spent all this money to raise this and there's houses that aren't selling, or they're not being built, or things like that. So you need to take this into account and think about that before you raise the rates on people that can, are barely making it right now. Thank you.
That's all the comment cards I received for public comment in the chamber for general public comment. Is there anyone else? There, i- if you did a comment card for eleven point two through eleven point four, you will be called up when those items come up. That's the wastewater treatment plant, not a sewer rate issue. Tim Reed? Okay. You can come up. You, you had wastewater.
Hopefully I'll make it quick. Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Tim Reed. I live and own property in the city of Riverbank. I want to personally thank every citizen here and all that voice their concerns via email, phone calls, and other means. Our issue tonight is not whether Riverbank needs to update, increase, and improve the city sewer system. It is specifically to address who are those chosen to formulate and execute a balanced budget and why they have so far been able to do so. With housing developments growing by leaps and bounds on all sides of the city, restaurants and other businesses stretching nearly to Modesto, it's obvious the infrastructure has to change to accommodate the current and future growth. The citizens are paying for and now demanding transparency in your accounting methods and numbers. Based on the most available numbers, and this is ballpark around two thousand and three, nothing's been posted since, so I'll do my best. Here are some figures to chew on. Total salaries for the top twelve city administrators, including the city manager per year is one million, six hundred eighty eight thousand, six hundred seventy two dollars and eighty nine cents. Your average income divided by twelve is a hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred twenty two dollars and seventy four cents. Your population in this city, our population, is twenty four thousand, nine hundred people, with eleven point five percent of those currently in poverty. The median income of those people that are available, or that have jobs is ninety thousand, two hundred sixteen dollars. Anyone want to take a guess what the difference between your salaries, the administrators of the city are, and the average person? I'll provide you the number. Fifty thousand, five hundred six dollars and seventy four cents. To, to give a comparison example, Oakdale's population is slightly smaller with twenty three thousand, two hundred and nine people. That's on the money, one thousand, six hundred ninety one people less. The salary difference between their public works director and Riverbank's public works director is fifty one thousand, two hundred eighty two dollars and ninety one cents. They got less people, they mow their own lawns, they trim their own trees. Riverbank contracts with Grover, but has a whole crew sitting there doing something. I'm not sure what. Uh, as elected officials and public servants, your absolute and only job is to represent and protect the interests of our taxpaying citizens to the best of your respective abilities. Should the time come that any of you or all of you are unable to completely fulfill your responsibilities, you are obligated to resign and allow a better qualified individual to assume the duty. There could be no mistaking that Riverbank officials and managers have and continue to conduct nepotism, sweetheart and backdoor deals, mystery finance losses, and desperate lack of oversight. These circumstances and many more are a direct conflict of interest that hinge on corruption in government. The definition is misusing.
Thank you for your comment. If you could submit it via email, it could be recorded or sent forward to the council members.
I got, I got about one paragraph, so I'll finish it.
We, we have a time limit and just to be courteous to everybody, it's, it's three minutes. Thank you for your comment. It's for, for our policy and procedure.
Mind if I finish my paragraph? Thank you very much. The voters have spoken. Thank you.
I'm very sorry, but we cannot proceed with your comment for the record. Sir, you're disrupting our meeting at this point and I appreciate it. Thank you. So we are going to, there's a more public comment?
That is all the public comment cards we received for, uh, in the chamber regarding items not on the agenda. We did receive two written public comments from residents Mari Cris Garasa and Katrina Marcos stating support for the hire of a new deputy police officer. And those will be included for the record.
Thank you very much. All right, we are moving on to consent calendar, items nine point one to nine point six. Is there a consideration for discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, consent calendar as stated.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Oliva?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
A public hearing, ten point one, an appeal hearing for a city issued code violation of fireworks section nine, nine two point three zero B. Used possession discharge of illegal fireworks. Uh, Vice Mayor Fossey is going to recuse herself and go to the next room over.
Mayor and Council, this appeals hearing takes a slightly different approach, um, compared to our other public hearings. So we would like to start with, um, by inviting Sergeant David Hickman to share with Council our enforcement efforts against the discharge of illegal fireworks.
Evening, Council, Mayor, City Manager, and everybody else. So just a reminder, when it comes to illegal firework enforcement, anything that leaves the ground is illegal. That just makes it plain and simple. We used in the last couple of years and this year, the Sheriff's Department helicopter and deputies on the ground to do maximum enforcement efforts. Once those i- violations are identified, the address is written down. The deputies will do a report. It's given to code enforcement, who then send a violation to the homeowner of the address on file. The helicopter footage is reviewed days later by a deputy to confirm the violation and to verify the address before a police report is written. Once that's all verified, he writes it. It goes to code enforcement, as I said, and then they do an administrative violation to the homeowner. Uh, the case you were here tonight is a second violation. The first violation was identified by the helicopter on July fourth of twenty twenty five. Deputy Tovar will present the footage and details of that first violation. Once he is done, Sergeant Ruben Nuno will identify the second violation that occurred almost an hour later on July fourth. So with that, I will, unless you have questions, I'll have Deputy Tovar come up and.
No, thank you. So at this point, uh, we're gonna do a swearing in of, please come up here. Yeah, we're gonna do a swearing in, uh, in order to receive the testimony.
Sergeant Tovar, if you can please raise your right hand?
Thank you for your promotion, but I don't want to get in trouble. I'm a deputy. Sergeant's over there. Thank you for the promotion. I appreciate it, Gabby. Thank you.
Sergeant Hickman's gonna give you. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, City, City Manager, how are you doing? I was tasked with, uh, doing follow up with our Air One One footage. What I'm gonna show you guys is gonna be the resident at fifty six sixty South Roseburg. What you're gonna see here is overview of the whole city. Um, about forty seconds in, you'll see the target residence as well. With these providers, you see here, it's mapped to the whole city. Um, so I'll just go ahead and let it play, and then once we get to the fireworks, I'll let you know. So as you see here, the fireworks are gonna be going off. There go fireworks were picked up. Actually, I believe this is the wrong address, just to give you a heads up. This is on Homewood Way. Fifty six sixty, if you go up, perfect right there. Now you're good. So as you see, it's coming in.
So as you see, it's coming into Rosebrook now, they're gonna switch over to the infrared, or I forget the exact term, so don't quote me, they're gonna switch over to the black and white, that's what you're gonna see to easily identify the property, and they're gonna pin it here shortly. So you see the aerial fires are coming from the backyard. Air 101's gonna do a quick orbit, and once they do the quick orbit, they're gonna go and pin it, as you see there, 5660. And just for reference, if you look at the top right, it's gonna say 2124, which is 9:24, and it's an accurate timestamp of when this video was taken. Like I said, I provided these videos, after these videos are provided to me, I do a quick summarization of what I see, and I provide this to the code enforcement officers and the issued administrative site. Any questions for me? Thank you for your time.
Sergeant. You can demote me if you feel like it.
Promote him.
I'll check, that's responsibility.
Sergeant Nunez, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Good evening mayor, city council staff. Sergeant Ruben Nunez, Riverbank Police Services, as stated, I was working on July 4th approximately 10:12 PM, I was patrolling the neighborhood of Rosebrook Drive. I had seen aerial fireworks coming from that general neighborhood, and I was trying to pinpoint the actual residence that the aerial fireworks were coming from. I began to drive southbound on Rosebrook Drive, and as I drove past the front of 5660 Rosebrook Drive, I observed aerial fireworks coming from the backyard of the residence. I had to stop my vehicle and get out, and then used my cellphone to take this video that you're seeing here. So by the time I got out of my vehicle and started recording with my cellphone, the aerial fireworks that had been going off in the backyard of the residence were no longer going off, but what you do see is all the smoke coming from the backyard of the residence. You will see, I zoomed in on the address, 5660, you also see that there's nobody outside in front of the residence in the driveway or in the front yard.
But just for clarification, not body cam cellphone footage?
Correct.
Okay.
You will also see some fireworks going on behind, in the background, those are not the fireworks that I observed regarding this violation. I believe that those fireworks were from further back into the neighborhood. So the fireworks that I observed coming from the back of the residence, I was not able to capture, you know, by the time I got out of my vehicle, got my cellphone out, started recording, but you do see the smoke coming from that backyard of that residence.
And you had visuals, right? That's why you pulled out the camera, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So as I drove past the residence, obviously I had to stop my vehicle, grab my phone out, get out of my car, and then start recording. So like I said, by the time all that happened, I was only able to capture the last portion of it and the smoke coming from that backyard. So, and with that, I'll take any questions, if you guys have any.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have the appellant, Rosie Hernandez, please come up. Ms. Hernandez, can you please state your name and raise your hand?
My name is Rosie Hernandez.
Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please proceed.
Hi, good evening council, mayor. I am coming up here to argue the fact, we did take care of the first citation, because we are the homeowners. Unfortunately, my husband cannot be here, he's at work, so I'm representing both of us. Being a citizen here for 20-plus years, this is the first time this has ever occurred. So we are owning up to that first, we owned up and we paid the first fireworks citation. The second one, the first one was a thousand dollars, we paid that. The second one was an hour later, and as the sergeant had informed you, that it was all hearsay, like assumption, like he didn't have visual, he didn't see my, you know, he didn't see my backyard. We were all in the front at that time, an hour later. We were on the opposite side, on the neighbors, on that road. We had several of our neighbors were out doing fireworks, legal, illegal, we saw it going all over the town. And so I have submitted written testimony of all my neighbors that we were out in the front celebrating July 4th. The smoke, I don't know, like the sergeant said, as well, and the fireworks, he did mention that it was not from my backyard. If you notice, it was to the right. At that time, at 10 o'clock, there was fireworks going everywhere in the city. So how can he say that it was pinpointed to 5660 Rosebrook Drive? When we were all outside, nobody was in the backyard. Smoke, I don't, you know, who's, I don't know who was, I can't, I don't know what to say about the smoke. All I can say that it's all under assumptions. So in my backyard, you have houses that's, I sent a map out, so I don't know if you guys have the map. So you see houses that are surrounding my backyard. So it could be from any house, any backyard. So he didn't physically, I mean, courtesy, he could have physically come out of his vehicle, he was stood out there in front, in front of my house filming. Why couldn't he just come to us and talk to us across the street? Or we were on the side, there's everybody outside. He could have came to the back, come to my backyard, you know, come up to my front door, and you know, give me, cite, cite me there. That was not done. So I'm arguing the fact that this is all an under assumption. There is no viable proof that it was my backyard. He mentioned it himself, fireworks to the right, that it was not in my backyard. So that's, I'm here arguing that fact, because I was honest enough and, you know, I owned up, I was the owners, I paid the first one, but the second one, this, that's $3,000. I'm not paying that because it's not, there's not enough proof saying that I was, that I was physically in the backyard. When we were not in the backyard, it's, there's no proof. So that's where, that's why I came in for the second time to defend myself and my family. Do you guys have any questions?
Could you, they're, you said they're an hour apart, the two citations, could you walk us through that, that hour, and you know, where you were in the backyard for that first citation?
So we, 9, I think 9:22 was the first one, so we were in the back, and then, you know, it's, it was dark, so all the fireworks started happening, and then physically, legal, illegal, you see it all over in our town, in the city. So at that time, we started moving to the front, to the front of the house, to the front area, to the, to our neighborhood, to the street. As you can tell, that there was all kinds of cars there, our cars, so we're not gonna be on our side. So we were on the opposite side, and then that's where I have proof, my neighbors all signed saying that we were all outside on Rosebrook. And that was around 10:22, I believe. So there wasn't, you know, we weren't, we had all come out to the front, there wasn't no one in the backyard unless it was, you know, my children, or I'm not quite sure, but there was nobody.
Did you guys see, sorry for interrupting, did you guys see the sergeant in front of your yard? If you guys were across.
Yes, we saw him, he was actually parked on the side of the street in front of a neighbor's yard. He was sitting there, and we noticed, and then he drove by, and that's when he, everyone noticed he was taking pictures, and we're like, well, was he taking pictures or was he taking video? There's neighbors on the right, left, and so we're like, oh, we don't know. So he didn't stop and talk to us or nothing, so we just looked at that.
So everybody that was in the video, that timestamp of, what was it, 9:22-ish? Everybody that was in the backyard, left the backyard, is what you're saying?
Yes.
And where did everybody go? Everybody went across?
Home, or they came outside in the front, and we were celebrating there.
Are there any other council comments or questions for Rosie at this point? Or if we could bring you both back up in case there's any questions? Any, anything of the-
So for Sergeant, follow-up there, Sergeant Nuno, so she's claiming that, that there was no visuals, you're saying there was visuals, could you kind of maybe just touch on that, that point, I guess?
If you're referring to me visually seeing the fireworks, so obviously I can't look into her backyard, I can see that the fireworks were coming directly from behind her house, as I stated, by the time I got out of my vehicle, and then came around the backside and started recording the actual aerial fireworks that going up into air had stopped, and I'm capturing basically the backend of that, which is all the smoke coming from the backyard. As I stated, I was driving down the road, I was not parked anywhere, I was just driving through the neighborhood trying to find where these aerial fireworks were coming from. Stopped in the middle of the road, got out of my vehicle, and began to record the video that you see there. You see from the video that there was nobody in the front yard, there's nobody anywhere in the front of that residence. So, yeah.
Did you happen to notice anybody behind you, like a small crowd or anything?
No, there was no other legal or illegal fireworks that I observed on that, on that roadway.
Any other questions, comments?
Ms. Hernandez, you said there was a possibility that your children may have still been in the backyard, in the aerial footage, there was about 15 to 20 people in the backyard at 9:22 PM. So is it still a possibility that there could have been your children in the backyard?
That time, we, everyone started moving to the front, everyone started leaving, it was 10 o'clock is when the video was taken. So at that time, we were closing the shop, we were going to the front to do our fireworks with legal and celebrate with the rest of our neighbors.
But now your children could not have been in the backyard?
No.
Any other comments or questions? So, I guess we have a few options for this violation. Let me see, this is an appeal to an existing violation, and it is in the amount of-
$2,000.
$2,000?
And this is a public hearing.
And I will open this up for public comment. Are there any public comment regarding this item? Any online?
No, mayor.
Okay. I will close public comment and bring it back to council. As I said, there's a $2,000 fee associated with this second violation, and so we have various options if there are any comments about that moving forward.
You guys can kind of clarify those options.
There's only one option, to uphold or dismiss the citation.
To uphold or dismiss the citation, and we could have a conversation around modifying the fee as well.
We cannot modify the fee.
We cannot modify the fee?
No, it's either you uphold the whole citation or you dismiss the whole citation. There was a $500 deposit paid on the citation.
Okay.
If you decide to uphold the citation, she will have 10 days to pay the remainder, 1,500. If you dismiss the citation, we will reimburse her the $500.
So you guys are looking for a motion in a second to either uphold or, okay, gotcha. I'll make a motion to uphold the citation.
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Oribe.
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel.
Yes.
Councilmember Call.
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez.
I will abstain.
Motion passes 3-1 to uphold the citation.
Thank you. Okay, so new business, item 11, oh, never mind, thank you Randy, move forward with the meeting without the vice mayor. Okay, item 11.1, consideration of a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the City of Riverbank and the Riverbank Miscellaneous Employees Bargaining Unit.
Mayor and council, your assistant city manager, Tammy El Cantor, will provide this report.
Good evening, mayor and council. So as stated tonight, I will be presenting to you the Miscellaneous Employees Bargaining Unit Memorandum of Understanding for October 3rd, 2025 through June 30th of 2027, and asking for your approval. So the City of Riverbank and Launa Local 1130 have mutually agreed upon a tentative agreement on behalf of the Miscellaneous Employees Bargaining Unit through good faith negotiation, and respectfully ask for your approval at this time. We originally had a tentative agreement with an effective date of September 19th of 2025. After reaching the agreement on the contract terms, the union did agree to allow modifications to the MOU to correct references that would align with the current law and add clarifications. We did let the union know that our next council meeting of September 23rd, we needed confirmation back by the date of September 16th in order to make that agenda. The union unfortunately did not submit the response until September 18th, so it was not, we were not able to include the memorandum of understanding on that meeting. When we received their response... Uh-oh. Did I turn it off? Yeah. It froze on me. So, um... When we received the, the union's response, they requested the ability to allow their group to cash out their vacation in the first year. So part of the agreement was that the unit, the miscellaneous group would be able to cash out vacation time based on certain criterias, and it was spelled out to be in July of each year. Since we were adopting the MOU after July, they had asked for accommodation for the first year. So since we weren't able to put the MOU on the council's agenda for September 23rd, we brought it to the council and closed session and got direction regarding the vacation cash out and the effective date of the MOU. The council approved the vacation cash out, and we identified the pay period for that for the first year, and then the call of effective date, the first one would be for the pay period of October 3rd through the 17th of 2025. And... As we went through this process of going through and redoing the MOU, and making the modifications, there was a clerical error when we presented the initial MOU to the union, and it had the September 19th date instead of the October 3rd date. It was initially relayed to the union that the agreement from the 23rd was an October 3rd beginning date, and that the vacation cash out was allowed. They, their representative thought that we had misdated the October 3rd date, so when they got the MOU with the red lines and saw the September 19th date, they figured that it had been corrected. So as we were going through and making these changes, and it was noticed the clerical error of missing the October 3rd- So as we were going through and making these changes and it was noticed the clerical error of missing the October third date, we let them know. So at that point, um, the union has asked, um, that the city accommodate a request um, to change the effective date back to the September nineteenth. The union felt that they were presented the agreement, um, that because they allowed us to make additional M O U changes, that there could be some consideration for the council to retroactively activate this, um, agreement to September nineteenth. So I will go through the terms of the agreement and in the end, ultimately, we would be looking at council for direction of the effective date of when this, uh, uh, agreement would go into effect. So our terms of our agreement again, the October third, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, unless we're given different direction on that date. Um, the cost of living adjustment, the initial one will be four percent. And then in July of twenty twenty-six, it will be a three percent. Uh, there is an equity adjustment agreement as the city is currently going through a citywide classification and, uh, compensation study. Um, and we agreed to meet back at the table with the union with those results and discuss any potential equity adjustments on, um, positions. Uh, comp time cash out, uh, the city has agreed to increase the cash out from a forty hours to a fifty hours. And just the comp time cash out is when an employee has worked overtime and instead of taking compensation for their overtime, they have booked those hours to take off at another time. We have agreed to vacation cash out. Employees may cash out a maximum of thirty hours of accrued vacation leave once per fiscal year, but they must meet the following criteria. The vacation cash out, um, is done in thirty hour increments. Employees have taken a minimum of thirty-six hours consecutive vacation in the prior fiscal year. And after cashing out the employees' accrued vacation, the balance must be a minimum of two hundred and fifty hours. Tuition reimbursement, we have agreed to increase our current reimbursement of fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred. And we have included certification and trade schools to be considered with that, uh, reimbursement. And this does require prior approval from their departments. Certification pay, um, when employees have certifications that are not complete, that are not outlined in their job description, they can get an additional certification pay and it's based on identified certifications. Um, and we've agreed to add three additional certifications, a class B driver's license, qualified applicator certificate and a qualified applicator license. Those last two have to do with pesticides and, um, weed spraying. Retirement health savings account, the city has agreed to create the ability for employees to contribute directly to a retirement health savings account without a contribution from the city. Safety boots reimbursement, um, allow employees on probation to receive this reimbursement. And then we have also agreed to increase re, boot reimbursement from two hundred and fifty dollars to three hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and we will allow employees to utilize city vendor accounts with prior approval, sorry. So some of our M O U changes that were made, um, were, uh, as follows. In our pay periods, there was a correction, the day that was spelled out in the M O U is not what we've been paying our employees out. So that was just to match what we are currently practicing. Standby pay, just a clarification regarding holiday double time pay and when it happens. Perse retirement, uh, we updated for clarification of the employees portion. Uh, employee assistance program, there was a clarification there. Um, our sick leave and bereavement leave were both updated to match recent changes in state law. And then here is the fiscal impact for your year one associated with these negotiated items, um, which give a total of two hundred and four thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars. And that is based on that October third effective date. So our, again, our request of you tonight is to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Riverbank and Riverbank Miscellaneous Employees Bargaining Unit and provide direction regarding the union's request to apply the first colo retroactive to September nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. And I will answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council at this time?
Um, if we agree to the September date, is that, um, taking away their ability to cash out vacation?
That would be, um, up to the council's direction.
Okay, but is that something that you talked with them about that?
I did let them know that, that could be something that you guys might consider because had it came back to the council on the twenty-third, that would not have been on the table.
Thank you.
What would be the cost difference between, uh, returing back to the nineteenth versus allowing the one month vacation pay?
It's about eight thousand dollars and sixty, eight thousand sixty dollars.
Other comments or questions? Any public comment? Any online? Oh, I don't have a public comment here, person. You just say your name. When you come, yes, please.
Hi, everybody. I noticed, um, something that was curious to me about the safety boot reimbursement. Um, typically even the state only gives a hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and for different bargaining units that are actual engineers, they only get two hundred dollars. So why is it so high for the city?
It's, it's actually in line with other cities, um, and it's been a negotiated item in their contract.
Any other public comment in person or online?
No one on Zoom.
All right, I will bring it back to council for consideration and, um, we gonna?
I'll make a motion to move to the September date for, um, the start of the contract with, uh, removal of the vacation.
For the first year.
For the first year.
I'll second it.
Um, real, real quick point of a clarification if I can. Uh, was this part of the recommended motion that staff had brought forward?
Staff was neutral regarding whether you go retroactive or if you change that vacation cash out. That, that is a decision for the council, sorry.
Thank you. All right, roll call please.
Councilmember even?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
You.
Thank you.
Item eleven point two, resolution to approve a contract change order for ninety percent design for the regional recycled water project phase one to Brown and Caldwell and authorize a budget appropriation in the amount of three million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars from the sewer fund one oh six.
Mayor and council, items eleven point two, eleven point three and eleven point four will all be presented by your director of public works, Cody Bridgewater.
I remember, so if council, sorry, I've been under the weather, so I'll get through this as best as I can right now. So eleven point two is the ninety percent design for the regional recycled water project for Brown and Caldwell. Uh, just a summary, in twenty twenty-two, the city proceeded with completing the fifteen percent design documents in order to apply for financial assistance with the state water board and FEMA. Following an open request for follow qualifications or an R F Q process, preparation of thirty percent design documents and staff's review of the one statement of qualifications received from Brown and Caldwell, based on qualifications and experience, tonight's request is to proceed with awarding a contract change order to Brown and Caldwell for the advancement of the design documents from the sixty percent level to ninety percent. In June of twenty twenty-three, city council approved the contract with Brown and Caldwell for the thirty percent design to advance the details of design, including evaluating potential addition of grit removal and cost efficient management of wastewater solids and support the advancing of projects towards implementation. This thirty percent design was completed on time and under budget by approximately two hundred and ninety thousand dollars in March of twenty twenty-four. In September of twenty twenty-four, council approved a contract change order with Brown and Caldwell for the sixty percent design to advance the details of design again. This design has allowed us to pursue and secure funding needed to advance the project. This sixty percent design phase was completed on time and on budget in September of twenty twenty-five. So in an effort to continue progress and remain on schedule for facility design and construction, city staff is proposing a contract amendment with Brown and Caldwell to progress from sixty percent design to ninety percent design. Items included in this phase of design include, but it aren't limited to, project management, quality assurance, quality control, meetings, value engineering support, ninety percent design services and some mills, which include detailed mechanical, electrical and structural drawings, optional design services, which would be redesigned due to the value engineering decisions, and an optional commissioning plan, which is a commissioning team schedule and testing requirements for the installed equipment. So this would be a program for the contractor to follow in the implementation of the project. And once it is built, this is the startup procedures that would be utilized in order to get the facility online and ready. So the ninety percent design plans shall include general civil, mechanical, architectural, structural, demolition and electrical and instrumentation drawings and possible plan changes due to the value engineering phases of the design. The estimated timeline for the completion of the ninety percent design phase is approximately fourteen months or December of twenty twenty-six. The cost of this element of the project is three million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, which includes a five percent contingency to be appropriated from the city's wastewater enterprise fund. And it should be noted that these funds have been collected via the five-year sewer rate increase implemented by council in twenty twenty-two. So these funds that are proposed to be spent on this have already been accumulated in the rate, previous rate increases. So staff's recommendation is that the city council approve a contract change order for the ninety percent design for the regional recycled water project phase one to Brown and Caldwell and authorize a budget appropriation in the amount of three million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand from sewer fund one oh six. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. We also have Mike Harrison, our lead engineer on the project with Brown and Caldwell here to answer any technical questions that you may have as well.
Thank you. Um, and I will likely repeat this for every item here for the next three items, but tonight, um, to be clear, we're not considering rates or any potential increase. Uh, comments must adhere for this item specifically to the resolution to approve for a ninety percent design for the project. Um, are there any council comments or questions at this point?
Comment? Why would we move forward with this ninety percent design when we have yet to get the feasibility study that could show that there's a better process to go through? Uh, it's a lot of money. The project is a lot of money and I'm not sure. And, uh, citizens are not confident that this is the best project to move forward on. And I think we need to postpone this project, this increase in funds until that feasibility study is done.
Did we get quotes back on that feasibility study? How much it's going to cost? Because originally it was presented at thirty to fifty thousand, but I'm just kind of curious where it's landing.
We did issue a request for proposal that went out to engineering firms in September of twenty, uh, twenty-five. Uh, we did receive one proposal back, um, from all of the firms that we sent that out to and the cost estimate was two hundred and one thousand dollars. So currently we are evaluating the proposal and that will come back to council for consideration, consideration to move forward or to deny, um, the proposals and put that back out for, uh, for additional, uh, quotes.
And under the circumstance, we were to approve that feasibility study. How long would we be postponing the project if we approve that one?
The estimated timeframe was about seven months.
Any other council comments or questions regarding this item?
Don't want to cut in line here, but I got quite a bit to say, so. I had to prepare my notes because I was gonna wing it, but not today. So, okay. So I'm gonna take you guys back a little bit because I, I, I was doing a bunch of researching. I was reading the twenty twenty-one feasibility study. Uh, I've shared that with some of the residents out there that kind of reached out, wondering, how did we even get here? And so I just started compiling all my thoughts and, uh, I was on the previous council when all, kind of all this started. And I was doing some research and, and saw when we initially had started all this, right? We started it at sixty-five million and it's just, you know, gone up to the one thirty-nine. So, so I'm gonna walk you through some of my thoughts here. Uh, so estimated costs when we started sixty-five million, uh, which, when we started talking with the state for the state revolving fund, right, it ballooned up to about ninety million. Uh, so the entire city council's intent back in the day, uh, was to, to secure funding through the S R, the state revolving fund, right? The S R F or, uh, to, 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 to get access to the federal or the state grants, right? And so not to place that permanent burden on the taxpayers. That's been our entire goal this entire time. Um, and so to demonstrate to the state revolving fund, uh, we had to do those rate adjustments, uh, that were approved in twenty twenty-two, in effect twenty twenty-three, all, all the way to twenty twenty-seven and we showed, uh, so those rate increases for, were for the ninety million. Right? So we can show financial credibility. Um, the long-term goal was to secure that outside funding, right? To build a new facility and then to reevaluate the rates with the intention of reducing the rates once those grants were received, right? So that was the entire goal of the council, the previous council. Uh, so since that plan was developed, a lot has changed, right? So funding sources have been eliminated or delayed, right? The federal brick grant, the Doge kind of get, got in there, just kind of started ripping everything apart, right? Uh, so that got eliminated, uh, state's water recycling grant. So we didn't get awarded this fiscal year. We don't know if that'll happen next year, right? Uh, the city is not eligible for the U S Bureau of Reclamation funding cycle. You have to meet a minimum of five hundred million total cost in the project. We don't qualify there. Uh, so documents to finalize the state, uh, so, sorry. So, uh, back to state revolving fund, uh, is the only guaranteed, as of today, the only guaranteed funding source that we currently have. And to finalize that loan is scheduled to be signed this Saturday, right? So if we pause that project, uh, we do risk losing that funding, but we can, we can reapply for that, right? So that's gonna, that's gonna be ongoing, right? State revolving, it's gonna, you can go in, uh, every year and apply. Um, due to inflation, so the regulatory requirements, construction costs increase, right? We've seen thirty-three percent increase just in construction costs alone, right? Everything is just going crazy. So the project is now risen to one hundred and thirty-six million, right? Uh, so it's more than doubled. It's the original sixty-five million. Uh, and we've been seeking additional funding, new opportunities under Prop four, which voters just passed. Uh, it's gonna provide three point eight billion for statewide water infrastructure projects, specifically this project, right? Uh, Leaky California Cities, thank you, Maricela, for sharing this for me. I've already registered. Uh, they're gonna be holding webinars, uh, October twenty-eighth. So they're gonna provide all this information about the application process. Um, looking forward to that. We've had consultants proactively asking about Prop four right, right when it passed and, and nothing is coming back to us, right? So, um, so kudos to the consultants for being proactive there, right? But we haven't got any guidance on the funding. Uh, there hasn't been any commitments for Prop four. So we're just kind of in this waiting limbo, right? That's kind of where it's at. So without the ground funding, the only remaining option to cover the shortfall, right? Whatever that is, the forty-six million, give or take, right, right in that area, is the EPA's Water Infrastructure Finance Innovation Act, the W F I A program, which would be a loan, right? It's long-term, it's low interest, uh, but again, it's a loan, right? So it provides, um, it would shift all that financial burden to the, to the right payers, right? So the additional, I'm ballpark, ballparking it, forty-six million. So that I, I just, I do not support, right? We've been going, trying to go the other way. We're trying to reduce the rates. We're trying to get these grants to lower it because it is impacting everybody, right? We're going through a hard time. I'm paying the rates, everybody's paying the rates. Um, and the feasibility that, that I was reading through twenty twenty-one, um, there, there was rumor from, I'm not sure if there was a council member that had proposed it, um, they, they're looking to explore a new plant location. So I don't know if that, if that rumor is true. Um, but that concept, when I was reading through the feasibility study we did in twenty twenty-one, that concept wasn't in there. Um, so looking at that option makes sense. Um, so during recent discussions, um, I asked if, that we should also analyze capacity charges, right? And so fees paid by And so fees paid by the developers to ensure that the new development is contributing their fair share towards expanding our wastewater treatment. Everybody agrees, right? Everybody in the council agrees, everybody, member of staff. The facility is operating at ninety percent of its treatment capacity, so that's far exceeding the industry standard of eighty percent threshold that triggers expanding a plant, right? So we know we have to upgrade it. We know we have to do something, right? So this means expansion, replacement, right? It has to be done. So there are gonna be system limits, regulatory issues, right? We are already hearing from the state. So let's talk about the state and the fed real quick. The state's regional housing needs assessment is requiring cities to approve new housing units, right? The RENA numbers, they're giving every single city, you have to meet these goals. And we've also created a department to find you guys if you don't try to reach those goals. Streamlight the process, make it easy for developers to come and do all this stuff. And then at the same time, the state is also saying that they're gonna find the cities. If you get a project and they have met all of their obligations, they've mitigated everything, it's a viable project, the city council's like, no, the state now can find cities also. So just sharing kind of like what we're hearing from the feds and the state, right? Yet, the state and the feds provide no financial support, right? So they just force us to do this, but then they don't give us anything, right? So that's kind of my frustration, is like, you're making us do it, you're telling us that we have to add all these units, but then you're not giving us the support, financial support to pay for it. There's gonna be an obvious impact to the infrastructure, right? So, so, sorry. So my opinion is move forward with the feasibility, see if there's something different than the current feasibility study did not cover. So if looking at a whole new plant was the goal from one of the council members, but I think with, without the capacity charges, I think the ratepayers currently are gonna bear an unfair share cost of it, and I don't think we need to continue to raise it, although at the last council meeting, they shared projected six percent for the next five, four percent of it was inflation. Still, that's not the way we're trying to go. We're trying to go the other way, right? We're trying to eliminate, we're trying to get grants, we're trying to reduce this. It's skyrocketed. So I'll stop there.
To clarify, were you giving more of a historical context to?
Yeah, so I'm just giving, so me and Rachel were on here, right? When we approved that feasibility study, so I just wanted everybody to kind of be aware of the little back history of where we've gone, right? And things have changed dramatically from that first feasibility study even to just now. And so let's look at the elements that were not in the feasibility study. So if there are other ideas that the council would like to, information, what information are you trying to analyze? What is not in this feasibility study? We need to give that to staff so that we know when we go for this RFP, that's what we're seeking, so we can analyze it, because a lot of the other stuff is already in there. Looking at secondary treatments, right? Looking at all these other options is already in this feasibility study. So what other information do we need to give to staff? So if we move this, which we've already directed, like, what are we trying to achieve out of this next feasibility study? What's not in this current one? And so if we're gonna pay two hundred and one thousand dollars, they need to have direction for what is it we're trying to achieve? What's not in the first one? What's in the second one? And then move it forward.
Okay, you're referring to the RFP for alternate options. And just to clarify on a couple points, I think I agree, everything you said is accurate. I just want to add the perspective that for the RENA, there, it's an effort, like you said, the word try, for us to update our housing element, work through our housing element, which we have done successfully. So in that sense, it's not so scary to know that the state would come down on us that hard, as we've done a good job as a city to move forward our housing element per the mandate for that RENA. And similarly, with the state water resources board, though there is that arm that they could come and be a more, I guess, forceful hand for the city, I've asked and spoken continually to our staff, and we've established a pretty good relationship in terms of working through what the mandates are. So just wanted to add a different, slightly different perspective in addition to everything you mentioned. Was there any other public or council comment questions in regards to this item specifically?
So I just have a couple more comments based on what Louise said. I agree, we do need to do something with our plant. I don't believe a expensive hundred and thirty-six million dollar recycle plant is what we need. Other communities, when they build a recycle plant, they have somebody ready to buy the water that offsets those costs. We don't really have that. They offset some of it, but they're not gonna offset a lot of the cost. We do need to do an expansion, but there's other things that we can do that are less costly. We don't have a permit right now to go to the river. We could get a permit and go to the river and not have to, we have to treat it to a certain amount, but not have to store it. Also, in the years that I've worked with wastewater, I don't think I've ever heard where the state will come and fine us when they know that we are working towards a way to fix our problem. And like Rachel said, we have a great rapport with them. When I've talked with them about this, they've never made any comment, and that's to you. Thank you for what you're doing at the plant, because you've done a great job of making sure we keep everything safe and we're doing what we can. But I just truly believe that when we reissue this feasibility study, which I hope will happen at the next meeting, that they will come back with alternatives that are less costly to our citizens. And that's the main goal is, I'm sorry, I'm retired, I can't afford a six percent increase every year, I can barely afford what's happening now. I don't make the money, I'm not working full-time, I'm retired, and I can't afford it. And if I can't afford it, neither can anybody else. And if they do six percent every year, I'm gonna say no. But if we have to do that, then that's what we have to do. But I think we need to wait, we need to postpone this until we have some alternatives. Yeah, it's gonna take about seven months, but that seven months could be thirty-five, a hundred million dollars. You never know. Let's wait. Thank you.
So at this point, we will move to public comment, and then we'll come back to council again.
Joshua Flanagan? Is that the same gentleman? Okay. Diego? No.
Yeah, we have a feasibility study that's out. Spending four million dollars to dig a bigger hole is not the way to go. It doesn't advance us in any way whatsoever. We talk about sticking to a timeline. We've blown through that timeline a long time ago, right? We both, we blew through that timeline a long time ago. Nothing's happened, we haven't broke ground. The expectation is, is that if we continue forward, maybe we'll break ground by twenty twenty, twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-two. We're not on the timeline anymore. Waiting seven months is not gonna be a predicament for us. We also need to look at other alternatives. I seen the feasibility study, it's a shame that I can't pull it up right now, but the people who made that study put out some crazy numbers about capital costs, improvements to our existing plants. I don't remember, but I want to say there was as high as like forty million dollars that we were gonna spend just to keep our plant moving. We haven't spent that. So I have a deep mistrust about some of the information that we're getting from some of these consultants. Eric Hegelson came up here, he talked to you guys about how we could finance the program, how we could fund the program. Tammy Elkan Tora, Maricela, he didn't offer anything, any documentation to support the claims that six percent over the course of five years compounding was gonna cover it. He was a verbatim presentation with a PowerPoint. He didn't provide any numbers. I work as a mortgage broker. I had a client who had a shortfall in his escrow account of thirty-one dollars, excuse me, it was thirty-one dollars per month, where he had a shortfall, where he had to make an increased payment. I think I spent more time reviewing his escrow account, doing an escrow analysis, getting on conference calls, to make sure that my client, who closed on a home, didn't have to pay thirty-one extra dollars per month. I expect more from the city council, especially if we're gonna be spending a hundred and thirty-six million dollars on a project that was originally eighty-eight million dollars that we do not have the funding for. And the idea that if we increase it to ninety percent because they're gonna do value engineering, well, that's just gonna remove the recycled water component that knocks off twenty-three million dollars in loans, am I right? So we're gonna be at the same place. We removed fifteen to twenty million dollars in engineering costs, but then we're short twenty-three million dollars in loans that we're no longer eligible for. It makes no sense. I think at this point, do the feasibility study and even look for other opinions. I keep hearing that the state, the state water resource boards, our permit is aged from nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-five. I spoke to Guy Childs, I called him on three different occasions, and he's retired as of September of this year, I believe. He told me, no, it's not an unusual permit. Many cities are operating on this, under this permit, just like Cindy said. They're not gonna come down and all of a sudden crash in on us, and that's, that's a boogeyman that people put out there. It's not true, it's not real. We need to look at other things, even like percolation basins, adding another basin, adding two basins.
Mr. Ryan Nixon? Ms. Carissa Commons?
Good evening, mayor and council. I've never been to a city council meeting before. I feel passionate about this, learning how much money is possibly gonna be coming out of my family's pockets. I am a working mother of four. If my son sitting here wants to sign up for an extra sport, I'm picking up an extra shift. I budget for my family, and if I go over the budget, I can't look around and pull out of somebody else's pockets. I need to rework my budget and figure it out with what I have. Mr. Erbey, you explained to us this project has ballooned because of inflation and construction costs have gone up. Well, you live in the same world I live in. Everything has gone up for everybody. It is not fair to look to our citizens and put the bill on us. We're all going through the same thing. We don't have unlimited incomes. I'm trying to raise my family and hold on to my home. This is just not fair. Riverbank's a beautiful city, and I hope you guys do right by your citizens. Thank you.
Mr. Jim Reed?
First of all, Ms. Fossey, I want to thank you. I hear somebody coming from the citizen's viewpoint, and I think everything you're pointing out is right on point. Diego, the same. Young lady, I totally agree with you. I understand there's a CFB, I believe it is, a rate study that has not been presented. Maybe some of these things are missing, maybe that's a feasibility study. Brian that talked earlier talked about other options and the timing of the decision. I think universally, from this point, this way, and including you, Ms. Fossey, I think everybody agrees with that. Whether the rest of you do or not, I think it's ridiculous to come up and vote on something that you don't have the money for. From the very beginning, we teach our kids, with the people we work with, as Diego brought up, we teach them to balance that budget, we teach them to work within that budget, and if we can't, then we come up with other funding. I appreciate, Mr. Erbey, what you're talking about and how you've researched it and stuff. Your statement is, we are trying to reduce rates. Two thousand twenty-five, eighty-one thirty for sewer, two thousand twenty-six, ninety-five, twelve for sewer, two thousand twenty-seven, one oh nine, thirty-nine for sewer. Estimated with the increased rates, two hundred and ninety-four dollars every two months, with an estimated overall utility bill by that time at five hundred and fifty dollars. Does she sell one of her kids? Does Ms. Fossey go out and get a second job working at Walmart? How do you, as the council, how do you, as the city administrators, figure that everybody in town, making that much less than what the city administrators are making, is gonna balance that and make that happen and keep this city thriving? I think it's incumbent on you folks to do that. I got a minute eighteen seconds, don't want to get yelled at, so I'm out. Thanks.
That is all the comment cards for I have in the chambers. I do have two public comments on Zoom. Ms. Eggers, can you please unmute?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Jamie Eggers, McHenry Avenue. Just very briefly, it's very good to know that the state now has the authority to find jurisdictions if you don't meet the RENA numbers. However, I suspect that that would not occur unless a good faith effort had not been shown to meet them. In the City of Riverbanks case, your second draft of the new housing element demonstrated that you would meet the RENA numbers, and that was without the Riverwalk proposed project, by the way. So I would have a hard time thinking that the city would be at risk for being fined since you've already submitted a new housing element that shows you can meet the numbers for the next eight to nine-year planning period. Thank you.
Thank you. Number ending in three, one, zero, eight, can you unmute? Phone number ending in three, one, zero, eight, can you please unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. I have comment and questions. Our sewer rates assessments are under Prop two eighteen, and under Prop two eighteen, they're considered a special benefit. Prop two eighteen defines a special benefit. As a distinct benefit to real property in specific area. And it also says, if a project or service would not provide such a special benefit, Proposition two eighteen states that it may not be such a special, may not provide such a special benefit. Proposition two eighteen states that it may not be financed by an assessment. On these three items, one of them says it's coming from sewer fringe one oh six. The other two say they're calling coming from enterprise fund one oh six. I'm thinking our money, our sewer payments go into the sewer fund one, but I'm not sure why there's two separate funds with the same number that are paying for all this. It also, Prop two eighteen also requires a calculation to show exactly how much it's costing you to provide the service to ours, to our properties, and how much is going somewhere else. I don't know if that has been done, I haven't seen anything. And the other question, another question I have is, why isn't this going to, if this is what's being done, and this is going somewhere else and not just us, whatever it's going to, as Proposition two eighteen requires, why isn't this going to an election? I'm totally against it because I don't see where the money is actually going as far as having two different funds with the same number on it. How much of this is really just to our property, but we have to pay just for the sewer project? This project is on the other side of the river. You're gonna plant the water and give it to the farmers on that side of the river and make more room for new growth in basins at the same time. What of any of that has to do with our special benefit? And I really think you should clarify some of this and go back and look at the Proposition two eighteen and what it requires. I do not think it should be passed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Beatriz Salamantes?
Hi, everyone. Before I start with my speech, two things that I wanted to address that, I mean, pardon, what you've mentioned. For the feasibility study that was done in twenty twenty-one, think about, we were just coming out of the pandemic. So much has changed since then, a lot. And as far as the state, from what I've researched, they have a schedule that they come out and do the audits. It's not like a surprise, bam, we're gonna show up and shut you down or fine you. And I'm sure there have been a schedule that they've been coming already, and if it was an issue, I think they would have already said something, or they're already working on it, it seems like. So I just wanted to address that real quick. So now I'll start with this. I'm speaking today to express my opposition to agenda items eleven point two, eleven point three, and eleven point four. I'm speaking today to express my opposition to Agenda Items eleven point two, eleven point three, and eleven point four. With these three new agenda items, you're placing residents at risk to shoulder even more costs and more rate hikes. We've already had utility rate increases for the past three years, and we're already scheduled. What was that? Okay. How much more do you expect Riverbank residents to take on? Continuing to push these projects forward, is it working? Yeah, okay. 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 Without an affordable plan or simply having the money to carry it out, it's both irresponsible and unfair to the people you represent. Please have a conscience and think about the serious impact this will have on residents. These choices will fall on your shoulders for years to come, and the community will remember who stood up for them and who didn't. While I support efforts to improve water sustainability, these agenda items represent close to four million dollars in new spending from the sewer fund, and there is no clear explanation of how these costs will affect future sewer rates, service fees, or local taxes. Nor is there evidence of a comprehensive cost-benefit analysis showing that these projects are the most cost-effective options. At a time when residents are already facing rising utility bills, inflation, and economic uncertainty, approving additional multimillion-dollar contracts without firm guarantees of long-term savings places an undue burden on households. Once these contracts are approved, the city and its residents are locked in into long-term obligations for additional design, equipment, and maintenance costs that could easily grow over time. We've seen similar projects elsewhere result in cost overruns and escalating fees that hit repairers the hardest. We should not be the only ones funding this project. Before taking on more debt, the city should explore every alternative funding option available, including state and federal grants, partnerships, or cost sharing with other regional beneficiaries, who will also gain from this effort. Let's explore options with California Water Board to determine whether existing loans could be converted into grants. Please reach out to regional agencies or nearby municipalities to help share these capital costs. Let's not take on more debt that our community cannot afford. Let's secure fair, regional, and sustainable funding first. Please make protecting Riverbank residents your top priority before approving any additional financial commitments. I urge the council to, one, present the public a comprehensive financial impact report; two, clearly outline and cap ratepayer implications; three, seriously consider and fully explore alternative, phased, or scaled-down approaches. Responsible water planning must balance innovation with affordability. Please prioritize fiscal sustainability and transparency before committing millions more to the sewer fund. Thank you.
I'd like your comments, please.
Yes, please. And if you could just come to the podium and state your name, and then you can give your comment about this item.
My name is Beatriz Perez. This is the second meeting that I've been to. And what really surprises me is, do you guys make an effort to reach all those citizens of Riverbank, even the Hispanic people and people that might not even know how to read? How do they know that these things that are going to have a major impact on their lives and are not notified? I mean, I'm glad I came. This was not the reason I'm here, I was having that water issue. But I'm so glad that I am here because it's made me aware of what goes on in our city that hardly anybody knows. I'm getting on the phone and calling all my friends and asking everybody to reach out to people. So when there is a meeting, everybody is made aware of it, and they know what's going on. I mean, we, older people like myself, we live on a certain amount of money every month. All summer long, I don't water my yard because I can't afford for my bill to get up any higher than what I'm already paying. My mother pays three hundred dollars a PGN E bill every month. She's ninety-three years old. This is, I mean, you guys are put into office to help the people that put you in office. You guys need to consider the things, the things that people have to live with and find better solutions to the problems that Riverbank is facing. But, you know? So, thank you.
That's all the comments we had for eleven point two. Mayor, Council, for the record, we did receive a total of fifteen written public comments, all opposing the approval of Items eleven point two, eleven point three, and eleven point four from the following residents: Beatriz Adriana Saravantes, Omar Marquez, Nicole Allen, Nick Meneses, America Navarro, Tony Marie Victor, Ann Ditko, Claudia Nares, Nancy Hughes, Angela Bailey, Myrna Germanik, Max Nariz, Damon Mayfield, Stephanie Mayfield, and Andrew Timbell.
Thank you. All right, I will bring it back to Council. Just real quick, I've mentioned the last meeting and asked my council colleagues to reach out to our city manager to urge or to recommend that we not move forward with these items until we have looked at alternate options. Councilman Uribe, you summarized the history of it, and back in two thousand twenty-one, I was under the, I had the perspective that we were going to move forward with this project at a ninety-million-dollar price tag with potential to have grants that would supplement a majority of this project. As we've moved forward through the years and with the uncertainty that we're facing in our economy in this moment, I think this moment calls for us to not move forward with this item until we've looked at alternate options. I want to open it up to our council again.
As I stated, I would agree. So I'd say we look at the feasibility study, see what else is out there, pause the project seven months or longer, and see what's out there.
I also agree. I hear the frustration and the worrisome and the concerns. And I want to reassure you that we are all taking all this into consideration, and we're not just taking anything lightly. So, thank you.
I just want to make sure everyone understands, and I feel the same way. I think that for me to get up here and cast a vote moving forward with this, I wouldn't be able to articulate what I would like to articulate as a person and to be able to have those conversations with you. Because not only am I a ratepayer at a residential level, but we're also paying as a business, and those rates are not cheap, and they're based on water usage. And we're tiered out basically on the type of business, and I don't know what exactly. I couldn't tell you what that is and how it came up with the type of business that we would be classified as. I couldn't tell you. But we do have a need for this, and so I really would like to see the proposal, the RFP, or for the feasibility study, to come back to us sooner rather than later. Because I just want a little bit of a picture for you guys, and Cody, you can kind of help me out with this. We're running at ninety percent capacity that supports approved projects. I'm talking Crossroads West, some of the other stuff happening on the east side of town. So our current plant can sustain that. But as we get into wet months, how does that look for us as a city? And what are, what could potentially happen if we don't get these adjustments made that we need to do?
So I can give you a prime example of the rainfall that we had last night. Our typical flow into the treatment plant on a daily basis is one point six million gallons per day. That will be anywhere from, let's say, nine hundred thousand to one point two million gallons on the flow range, you know, at any given hour. Last night, we peaked at nine million gallons. So the wet weather greatly affects us. The additional rainfall, let's say if we have a wet winter, that eats up all of our capacity at the treatment plant. We get to a point where we are literally balancing, you know, a half an inch of water to try and maintain compliance with the state. So it's vaguely, it's greatly dependent upon, you know, what kind of wet season we have. But our system is very old, and there's cross connections throughout the city that, you know, are known about and that are planned to be replaced. But again, these things take money. And we have the additional homes coming in as well. So it greatly, just the wet weather alone greatly affects the treatment plant operations.
I would like to make a motion that we postpone eleven point two until we can get a feasibility study done. But I'd also like to ask my fellow council members to email Maricela and tell, ask her, not tell her, because we're nice, to move forward with reissuing the feasibility study so that we can move it forward sooner than later. Thank you.
Any chance you can make that motion for all, can we do that? Can we just postpone all three? Eleven point two, eleven, eleven point two, eleven point three, and eleven point four? Or do we have to go through? Open them up. Okay. Gotcha. Okay, so I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, eleven point three, resolution to award a contract for ninety percent design, phase program management, project permitting support for the regional recycled water project, Phase One to KSN, and authorize a budget appropriation of the amount of two hundred sixty thousand three hundred thirty-seven from the Sewer Fund one oh six for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Mayor and Council, given the discussion that happened with regards to Item eleven point two, I would recommend that the council open up for public comments, and then we take motion.
Is there public comment regarding this item specifically?
So?
Eleven point three. And this is for the specific water or project management of the design?
Mayor, we do have three comment cards regarding the item. So if you wish to speak on eleven point three, I have Diego, Mr. Tim Reed, and Beatriz.
Just wanted to make one comment. I don't think it's specific to eleven point three, so I'll be very brief. We're talking about storm surge recently, which is a comment that Stacy Call had mentioned.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off, but we are reserving this public comment period for this item specifically. I appreciate you.
Mr. Reed, do you have a comment on eleven point three? Okay, Beatriz? Okay, then that's all we have.
Are there any online?
There is no one on Zoom wishing to speak.
I'll bring it back to Council.
So I'll make a motion to postpone Item eleven point three. I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item eleven point four, resolution approving contracts with Aqua Aerobic Systems, Inc. and Android Separation Technologies, Inc. and Trojan UV for pre-selection of major equipment for the Riverbank Regional Recycled Water Project.
I do have a public comment. But we would take the same motion as they are related to the ninety percent design.
Thank you.
Phone number ending in three, one, zero, eight, can you please unmute? Phone number ending in three, one, zero, eight, can you please unmute? Can you turn down your device in the background, please, Ms. Halbert? Ms. Halbert, can you please unmute?
Are you there?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay. Now, I just wanted to reiterate what I said at the beginning, that my comments were all for all three items.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all, Mayor.
All right, I will bring it back to Council for consideration.
I would like to make a motion to postpone eleven point four at this time.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Council. Item twelve point one, social media.
Mayor and Council, this item is being presented by Councilmember Luis Uribe.
Thank you, Maricela. So in front of Council, I kind of printed out the consultant services agreement for Jane Media Services. So just to take it back again, another history lesson, I guess. Back in October twenty-second, we approved the contract. At that time, the funding source was through the American Rescue Plan Act. As the contract was for one year with two optional years. The difference now, the ARPA funding is done, that was a one-time agreement. It is now shifting funding sources into the general fund. And what you have in front of you is attachment two out of the contract, page one. If you look at recitals, number A, it said the city issued a request for proposals, RFP. We never actually did an RFP, so this is kind of just standard language. Because of the timing, we were on a crunch, we were at the very end of the ARPA funding, we didn't want to lose it, right? And so staff kind of, just kind of added this standard language. So now that the funding source is changing, she's completed the one year. If we can bring this back as an agenda item for review and discussion and fix this mistake here on the recital number A for the RFP, because there was never actually an RFP done, so.
Thank you. So again, to clarify, you want an item to come back to amend this language?
Correct.
Any council comments or questions?
What do we need to do? Just send an email to Maricela?
Verbalize it?
No, you would provide direction at this point in time, to bring back the item to not recommend the change, but to discuss making a change.
I make the same recommendation.
I would like to make the same recommendation.
I would like to make the same recommendation.
Could there, we have majority, but, or no, not yet. Again, to clarify, we're in year one, and I don't see the additional language here, but there's extensions, correct, with this contract? So I just want to clarify, all we're doing, because there's, I'm coming, a few things are coming to mind with our communications plan, the conversation down the line with PIO, et cetera. All we're doing is taking out, city has issued a request for proposal for consulting services, and then approving the remainder of the contract.
Bring it, so what I'd like to do is bring it back, update the contract, the timing is correct. The funding source is changing, so ARPA was one-time funding, that's what it was designed for. Now that it's shifting sources, general fund is usually more ongoing, so reevaluating makes sense at that, at that, at that, at that meeting, right? Because it's the people's money now, it's not just federal grant. So having that discussion and then just kind of moving forward.
Okay. I'm just thinking a bunch of different scenarios, but this, yeah. I mean, I am of the mind that I don't want to change anything regarding the contract, but if, just other than to correct this language and move forward with it, you know, per usual. Is it in the contract itself that it would move to general fund?
Yes, at this point in time, we don't specify in the contract the funding source. That's just the budgetary item that we do during the annual budget.
Okay. All right. Then I agree with amending the contract language to correct the RFP verbiage. Thank you. Okay. Maybe I'm overcomplicating it. I know, it's been a long day. Okay. Comments and reports. Stuff, thirteen point one.
Mayor, there was a public comment with the hand raised.
Oh.
If you want to open that.
Sorry about that, yes.
Phone number ending in three, one, zero, eight, can you please unmute? Phone number ending in three, one, zero, eight, can you please unmute?
I did.
Go ahead, did you have a comment on twelve point one?
I just have, just a quick one. This item is twelve point one, is shown on your agenda as twelve point one, but there is nothing in the staff report or anything else on this thing about what you're talking about, documents you're talking about or anything. So just be aware that whatever you're doing, nobody else knows what it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I wanted in an effort to increase a different type of participation with our council, this is a new item on the agenda where council members can bring direct referrals to the agenda for discussion. There is no decisions being made regarding this portion of the agenda council referral. So there will never be decisions being made, rather, direction for staff to come back with more information. So if anything, it's an added informational item for residents to be able to see where council is on. All right, staff.
So November fourth is a statewide special election to consider Proposition fifty. Registered voters should, voters should have started receiving their ballots from the county register of voters. We do have a Dropbox available inside of Costless Foods between the hours of seven AM and ten PM, Sunday through Saturday. And then the actual Riverbank Voting Center will be at the community center starting Saturday, November first, and they'll be open through November fourth. The weekend hours for that time period are eight to five PM, and the day hours, or the weekday hours are seven AM to eight PM. Actually, I think only November fourth is seven to eight, with November third, the Monday continuing at eight to five. On October twenty fourth and twenty fifth, Parks and Recreation will be hosting the annual haunted hayride at Jacob Myers Park. Join us for a trip around the trail at the park and some scares and family fun. Trucks begin down the trail at seven PM and will end at ten. Tickets are twelve dollars for adults and six dollars for children ages four to twelve, and free for those that are three and under. On November first, Parks and Recreation will be hosting the sixth annual Dia de los Muertos celebration here in downtown Riverbank. Come celebrate life and honor loved ones at this family, at this free, family-friendly event. The event will feature music, food, and great traditions in the community. And my last comment on December thirteenth, put that on your calendars, Parks and Recreation will be hosting its annual Christmas parade. The event will begin with its traditional Christmas market with local vendors selling handmade crafts at three PM. The parade will begin at five thirty with this year's theme being California Christmas. Shortly after the parade, we promise, the city will fully light the Christmas tree in the plaza with pictures with Santa afterwards. I promise, I promise.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So last week, all of us went to Long Beach, California for the California Cities Conference. I think we all learned a lot of different items. Couple of things that I learned a little bit about and hoping to implement the next year is building up our youth here in the city and improving the trust between us and the community. And it was fun to interact with a lot of our other city officials and learn what they're doing in their cities. On October twenty first, from two to four at the Riverbank Industrial Park, I will be having another meet and greet. They will be offering tours. If you would like to have a tour, I have it on Facebook and on Instagram, but if you've got a pin now that I've given you time, you can call eight six three seven one five four and reserve a spot on the tour. And then on the same day at six o'clock, we have our women's club meeting. It will be at Marina Campbell's house, and if you want to come and you don't know where she lives, please give me a call. I don't want to advertise her address over everything. You're welcome, Cal. So if you want to come, just get ahold of me and I will let you know where to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Uribe.
Thank you, Mayor. So I also had the pleasure of going to, to Long Beach. On day two there, we had the pleasure of start, we've been working on for about two years of starting a new, a new group there. It's, it's for veterans. We're, it's, we've got a two-year process to kind of qualify to become a caucus, so that's kind of the goal of the new group. That way, we're kind of advocating at the legislative level of, and then just kind of connecting with all members, all, you know, elected officials throughout the entire state, whether you are a veteran or not, or have some kind of connection, or, or live near a base, or we're just trying to network and, and form that group. And then hopefully have it as an item, a voting item for the delegates next year. So that's kind of our, our, our goal there is to have that item be voted on to become a caucus, caucus next year. So that's, that's, that's what kind of came out of that. Me and the mayor recently met with American Veterans First, they're located here, three two two eight Santa Fe, and a rep from Veterans in Action. We are going to be doing a Veterans Day celebration, they're going to be doing a ribbon cutting with the chamber and a meet and greet, and so I'd like to invite the entire community. It'll be, I think, the first veterans event in the city of Riverbank. I'm not, I could be mistaken, but it will be November third, eleven to one PM, like I said, three two two eight Santa Fe Street. It's going to be their grand opening, we're going to have food, social gathering, connect with local leaders, connect with veterans. Riverbank has a population of twenty-five thousand, but we have the highest concentration of veterans per population, which was a cool fact that George from V, Veterans in Action, shared with us. So please come on out, I'll be sharing this exact same, same information at the next council meeting, so please come join us, thank you.
You, Councilmember Pimentel.
Thank you, Mayor. Maureen and myself of Riverbank Sister Cities, we met with Winnie and Ray of Lucky House, planning for the Chinese Lunar New Year, we're excited about that. So if you'd like to be a part of it, there's no membership fee for the Sister Cities, they need more help. Also, I too was at Long Beach, and what I learned was a lot about the other mayors and the officials, they go through a lot of the same things we do, and everyone had pretty interesting stories that night. And also, Sister City had a booth at the Cheese and Wine Festival, and I heard a lot of great things about this year's event. It was very organized, just a great turnout. People at my work were still talking about how Riverbank is really making a comeback after the cheese and wine kind of, you know, fading away, and they could tell that the city put a lot of time and effort into it. And also, I want to encourage you to visit the Riverbank Historic Museum, stop right here and just, you know, get a little education on Riverbank, sign the book and let them know that you were there. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Cal.
So a couple weeks ago, I had the privilege, I would say, of participating in Fire Ops one oh one, and Travis back there was actually my handler, and it really is just like it sounds. So I had the opportunity to sit in a controlled fire, and it was absolutely incredible, one of the best days of my life. And I don't know who decided to give me a saw, but I took the chainsaw and had the privilege of getting to cut a square in a roof, and I feel like I killed it. But it was by far one of the best days of my life, and it's a true testament to the work that you guys do every day, and it's incredible how, in such a chaotic scenario, how calm, level-headed, everybody knows exactly what their job is going in. It probably took me fifteen minutes to make sure every little piece of my skin and hair were covered, and to think that these men and women get to a fire and they adjust within thirty seconds to a minute is truly amazing. So I salute you and thank you for all of the work that you and your team does in all of our fire districts, because it was once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And then just a reminder that this Thursday, I'm doing my open office hours at Pizza Plus from six to eight PM. I have invited Sierra House and Youth Council to come, if you guys would like to stop by. I will have a costume contest, and I will also be providing pizza, there's no RSVP necessary, so please come.
Thank you. I attended, I learned what the word investiture meant for the first time when I went to this event, but it was just a couple weeks ago to welcome the new president of Stan State. I felt compelled to mention it because not only am I deeply indebted to them, but it was a great experience attending to get my undergrad and graduate degree there in twenty nineteen. Let me see, on Saturday, I joined Learning Quest, which is a nonprofit that does literacy and educational services for both youth and adults, to do their over-the-edge fundraising event, and that meant me rappelling down the side of a five-story building, which doesn't seem like a lot, but it was terrifying to do. I will do anything for our nonprofits. Cal Cities, we mentioned, it was a great event, and it was even better that the whole council and our staff went. I was sworn in as a Women's Caucus Vice President, and similarly to the process that Councilmember Uribe is going through, I'm working towards getting a young elected caucus started with the organization. So I won't assume anyone's age is here, you're all invited to that, and I'll give you more information on it all. And again, I do want to thank Parks and Rec for an amazing event, I want to thank Public Works for dealing with the unexpected downpour the other night, and every department as well. It's not easy dealing with us or doing what you do, so thank you all. And finally, I haven't mentioned, I have a hard time switching hats with, between what I do personally and my own personal capacity and official, but I hosted the Taste of Riverbank event, which was really successful. My initial year for this was meant to be small and to execute it well, and I, I plan to host every year moving forward, and hopefully the night before, cheese and wine, if I could take advantage of what's going on with Parks and Rec. I raised about twenty-two thousand dollars, every penny that went directly to Ser Optimus this year, which is a local nonprofit that helps women and girls here in Riverbank. Also, to pay our vendors to participate in the event itself, rather than charging them a fee to participate, I, I try to offset costs for them. There's about three to five thousand going to the Riverbank Chamber to pay for every one of those vendors' membership for a year, and paying for all the local vendors who, who helped from decoration to plant, to set up. So I just want to appreciate everybody for, for all the support that you're going to do. Do you have, you have a comment? Okay, and that's it for me.
I forget things, and I forgot that I went to her Taste of Riverbank event, and I just want to congratulate you on a great event. The food was amazing. Some of them were doing full plates, which I didn't really like, because then I couldn't taste more, but it was a great event, the setup was wonderful, all the vendors were wonderful, and I just want to congratulate you again on a great event.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to closed session, item fourteen point one, conference of labor negotiations pursuant to government code five four nine five seven point six, agency reps, city manager Maricela H. Garcia, employer organizations, Riverbank Ben Management Employee Association. Is there any public comment?
Mayor, there's the one I'll do.
Okay, I remembered. All right, we are going to adjourn to closed session. I gotta go. Item 15.1 Report from item 14.1 Conference of Labor Negotiators. Uh, direction has been given to staff. Our next regular city council meeting will be on Tuesday, October 28th. Uh, this meeting is adjourned.